Okay, it's 6:00 PM.
I call this meeting to order for February 9th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Richard Boss.
Is everybody there?
Mayor Pro Tem Nadia Sykes.
Here.
Donald. Did she say here?
Somebody said something.
She is here, yes.
Okay, oh.
Sorry, I had it wrong.
Muted. Commissioner Josh Warden.
Here.
Commissioner Susan Payne.
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Dusty Wright.
Here.
Commissioner Jason Baldwin.
Present.
City Manager Brian Caesar.
Here.
City Attorney Patricia Bengoche.
Here.
The deputy clerk is present, and Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Teresa. If everyone would please stand for the invocation, which will be given by our deputy clerk, Teresa Gutierrez, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Commissioner Wright. Everyone would please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Lord, we bow our heads in prayer, asking for your guidance and your grace. We pray all decisions made tonight are sound and beneficial to our city. Watch over us and protect us, as well as those who place their lives on the line to protect us each day. Thank you for your mercy and compassion tonight and always, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Dusty, we can't hear you. Are you going to leave though?
Oh, please follow me in the pledge. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you both. Move on to the approval of the agenda, and I believe our city, I think our city manager, Brian Caesar, is going to pull an item off of that. Brian?
Mr. Mayor, we need to, staff needs to have item number nine pulled from tonight's agenda. We'll bring it back at a later date.
Item number nine is to be pulled from the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as suggested for admitting item nine?
So moved.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Commissioner Baldwin. Have a motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve the agenda. Do I hear a second?
A second.
I have a second from Commissioner Wright. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes seven zero. And it is approved. Evening. Under presentations, we have the Alliance for Regional Military Support. ARMS will support a briefing on activities in support of Holloman Air Force Base and the regional military installations of Las Cruces, White Sands Missile Range, and El Paso at Fort Bliss. We have with us this evening, Richard DeWu, the ARMS Treasurer, and Gus Rodriguez, the ARMS Chairman. And gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Almagordo.
Good evening, Mayor Boss. Mayor Pro Tem Sykes, City Manager Caesar. Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. And for the record, Richard DeWu with the Alliance for Regional Military Support. I, do you need me to share screen, or will you share screen there?
You, you, you can share it.
Can you see it? Can you see the screen?
Yes, yes. We can see you fine.
Can you see the presentation?
No.
We only see, no, we don't see the presentation.
How about now?
There you go.
Yeah, yes. Now we do.
Great. Thank you. Success. Thank you for giving this opportunity to speak to you this evening and to brief you on what we have going on within the ARMS group. First thing I want to do is introduce our chairman, Gus Rodriguez, who will be briefing you shortly. All the members of our executive committee are on, even though they won't all be briefing due to the time constraints that you have. And so because of those time constraints, I will be kind to you and not read these briefing slides to you. You've already seen these when you approved your support for us on the mission, the vision, and the strategies of the ARMS group. And by the way, while I'm on that point, I want to respectfully encourage you in the future, because we're supposed to do these with you quarterly, to allow us maybe a few more minutes in the future to present these very important bits of information to you on the work that's being done specifically with Holloman and Almagordo, but obviously, more generally speaking, on all three of our installations and our neighboring communities. And again, on the focus areas, providing the current defense industry engagement, et cetera, higher education partnerships, which is a critically important part of our mission, and addressing our transitioning soldiers, airmen, and their families. And for those who are viewing this program, by transitioning, we mean trying to keep them within the Almagordo community in the area once they leave the military and keep them as employed citizens in our communities, and improving the region's appeal for future stationing initiatives, because as we've talked about many times before, we succeed or fail as a region, the triad, working all together. And so if we're able to increase the appeal of all of our installations and our communities that neighbor with them, we just make ourselves all the more attractive to the Department of Defense. And particularly with the new defense and aerospace contractors to the region, that's the area we've all been sorely lacking in and want to focus on going forward. Our quick list of our current government partners, and I'm happy to say to the city of Almagordo, you were the second of the communities across the region to sign up and commit to us, you and Otero County. And the rest of them seem to join right in with us. Thank them very much. And God bless you, Commissioner Josh. That was a sneeze. Here's a list of our business partners, and I want to accentuate this point, because as you'll notice on this list, it's a who's who in the El Paso market from private sector. But we wanted to wait until we got our wheels turning and got some work going to work with the city of Almagordo and Holloman before, with your help hopefully, we could begin recruiting businesses in your area as well to be active participants with our committee. And that's the end of my portion of the presentation. I'm handing it off now to Chairman Rodriguez. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so Mayor Pro Tem, City Manager, and members of the commission, thank you. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to brief, and thank you for the trust that you have placed in us to work with the city of Almagordo and Otero County to move forward in promoting the regional military complex. One of the key things that we felt is important is to make sure that we are engaging in elected officials within our region to support, in the case of, for example, Congresswoman Escobar, to make sure that she understands and is in tune with what's happening at Holloman Air Force Base. So we have met, we met with her and former woman Congresswoman Torres Small to discuss the impact, their role on the HASK and the way forward in terms of advocacy for the region. We met with, at the time newly, she was just a Congresswoman-elect, but we met prior to her being sworn in, Congresswoman Harrell, to discuss with her the impact of the region, and also had a briefing with newly-elected Senator Ben Lujan in regards to what is taking place. We have met with the Almagordo community leaders and have constant, Almagordo community leaders have constant communication with Cypress International, which is a consultant that ARMS works with to be able to address issues pertaining to the region. And that dialogue takes place on a regular basis between the Almagordo community representatives and Cypress International. And we are scheduling meetings. We're in the process of having a discussion with the Holloman Air Force Base Garrison Commander to discuss installation priorities and to see how we can best support that. And we are continuing to meet with, in this case, Army Medical Command and the Air Force Medical Command, and how that, how the transformation of military medicine is going to be taking place, and how that's going to affect Holloman Air Force Base, White Sands, and Fort Bliss, and ultimately, how that will be impacting our regional communities, because we know that many of our veterans are receiving services from those installations, and we know that that's going to be impacting them in some way. So that is a major concern for us on how they move forward with those efforts. Next slide, please. We are working closely with Army Futures Command in Austin to engage, to bring experts to the area to give information to small businesses and to showcase the capabilities that we have within the triad. So some of those, we are getting ready to prepare one of those outreaches in the region sometime later on this year with their small business specialists to see how we can engage local business with them. We've also facilitated meetings with General Murray, the commander of Army Futures Command, and Congresswoman Escobar and the former Congresswoman, and have coordinated visits with General Funk, who's in charge of the Army's Training and Doctrine Command, and regional leaders, and also General Garrett. And we've hosted partners, regional partners, triad partners in a briefing by General Tribula from White Sands, so that they can all understand the importance of the work that's being done at White Sands as it pertains to national defense. And also had a meeting that we opened up to our partners with Army Test and Evaluation Command, who is working in some of the testing opportunities that are taking place at White Sands, and met with the Fort Bliss Garrison Commander to talk about the mobilization force generation missions that take place at Fort Bliss, which impact the region in terms of the various National Guard and Reserve units that come to the region to be able to train and to be able to utilize those assets. And we've had a meeting that we opened up to our partners with Lieutenant General McKean from Army Futures Command, and who is taking a look at an upcoming visit to the region to see how he can best utilize some of those assets that we have within the region for some of the efforts that Army Futures Command is conducting. Next slide, please.
Can I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes, ma'am. Please do.
Are you showing the slide? You showed a slide presentation. Is anybody else seeing it? Yes.
Yes, we're seeing the slide. Is that Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Yes, we are. We're seeing.
What am I doing wrong, Teresa? Any idea? That's okay. I don't want to interrupt the presentation. I'll just listen, but I don't, I just, I see where it says he started sharing the screen. I just don't, I don't see the slide, so.
Ma'am, we'll make sure that you get a copy of the presentation for you.
It's fine. It's fine. Thank you. I'm sorry. I just.
From.
If I'm confused, I just asked the question. Everybody knows it, so.
Let me, let me insert just for a second. Teresa, do you have copies of the presentation that you could give to the commissioners? You're on mute. I'm sorry.
You're muted.
Oh, I'm muted. I'm sorry.
No, 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 no. Teresa's muted.
Teresa, do you have?
Commissioner Payne, it's in our agenda packet.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I'll pull it up. That's fine. We do not have.
The one called notable accomplishments. And so Gus, I'll go to the next one for you now.
Go ahead. So our way forward is, again, to continue to support modernization at Fort Bliss and the effort that they're doing with the mobilization force generation efforts that they're having, and to continue to proactively improve the regional military medical capabilities, staying engaged with Army Futures Command and AFWERX, which is the Air Force version of Army Futures Command. We continue to advocate for Holloman Air Force Base and its capabilities. And also, it's our work that we're doing with White Sands Missile Range. The one thing, for example, that we've learned, that we didn't put in the briefing, but we wanted to make you all aware of, is the Air Force's adoption of a stationing criteria that they're utilizing. So there are folks in Almagordo that are working on that. Mr. Bramson is one of those individuals. And what that basically does is it takes a look at the AARP criteria that's utilized to rate communities. And in an evaluation of it, we determine that some of the information is outdated and that we need to get information on Almagordo to them, so that we can be able to improve that score and score higher in terms of future stationing capabilities as it pertains to the Air Force. We are advocating for Joint Modernization Command at 32nd, Joint Task Force North, which headquartered at Fort Bliss. We continue to sustain and improve the defense workforce by building a pipeline of veterans, training them in the region. One of the challenges that most of, all three of these installations are having is that a large percentage of their workforce at White Sands, for example, 50% of their civilian workforce is at retirement age, could walk in at any time and just say that they're ready to quit. So where do we find those replacements? Our goal is to try and find those, not only through transitioning service members, but also utilizing, you know, the educational, higher educational systems within the region to be able to funnel some of those men and women into government service and working at our military installations. And we continue to work on sustaining safe, desirable, and affordable off-host housing for all our service members. We're working with the area school districts to focus on STEM AI and autonomy and data mining. One of the things that we're going to be doing is we're going to invite a guest speaker. We'll be reaching out to folks in Almagordo to have a conversation with principal and STEM teachers, so that they can be able to become a little bit more familiar with the opportunities that the Department of Defense has, not only from the uniform side of the house, but also for those individuals that want to go into government service or potentially could go to work with contractors. So we're, we're working very closely on preventing encroachment at all our installations, because we know that that would impact future stationing capabilities. We are advocating for continued improvement of service of the airport within the El Paso area. And we're encouraging political leaders to advocate for Fort Bliss, White Sands, and Holloman. We know that you have a very close relationship with the folks at Holloman Air Force Base, but we want to provide you an opportunity, if you so desire, for us to be able to connect you with people at White Sands and also with Fort Bliss. We know that Fort Bliss utilizes some of, some of the capabilities that the city of Almagordo has, you know, for some of their training opportunities. So again, it would be good to develop that relationship with them. And we're developing talking points to our regional, our regional community leaders, because in their travels or in their interaction, whether it's virtual or in person, there's always that opportunity to present those capabilities for the installation as to, you know, what, what they have and what we have to offer within the region. Next slide. So subject, we'll open this up to any questions that any of you may have of us.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, it's kind of for Richard, too. So you mentioned you're meeting regularly with community leaders. Richard, are you involved in that?
Ma'am.
I'm aware, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. You were talking to Mayor Boss. We both have.
Mayor Boss, yes.
I apologize.
Mayor Boss, sorry about that. Forgot where I was. Mayor Boss, are you involved in those meetings?
We also, we also have, we have, I think, a very good relationship with White Sands Missile Range also, and a lot going on out, you know, we have a lot going on out there. It's been, things have slowed down a lot, of course, as far as the communications between both of the institutions because of COVID. The meetings are much, much less frequent than they used to be, but we still have with White Sands, not so much, but Holloman Air Force Base, still, still have a, we have a relationship with them in spite of COVID.
Right. But with this particular group, they, you had mentioned that you meet regularly with community, not, not you, Mayor, but, but whoever was just speaking, I'm sorry. You mentioned that you meet regularly with community leaders. I just wondered if our mayor was involved in that.
Ma'am, the representative for Almagordo is Mr. Bramson. But we are open to having, you know, at times, the mayor of Las Cruces and the mayor of El Paso participate. So we are open to having that participation from anyone, from any commissioner or the mayor or city manager for that matter.
I'm aware. Commissioner Payne, I'm aware of a lot of what happened, and I've heard too of Mr. Bramson. We meet occasionally in different meetings, and he passes a lot of information on to me, things that are going on at both Holloman Air Force Base and White Sands Missile Range, and also Fort Bliss.
All right. And I understand, it's been, and I'm sorry, there's an echo in here. I had to move to another room because of my internet connection, but I understand we've been in COVID. It would be nice to hear more than once a year about these kind of updates. That's all I'm suggesting, is maybe we could get some more pre, because I, a lot of the stuff I found interesting but had no idea. So I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but I would, I would personally like to know more than just once a year what, what's been in place.
I can pass some of this information on to you, and I will do that from this point on, and hopefully, we will get this COVID thing under control and be able to meet more, meet more often.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, just, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry. Go ahead. You, you got a question?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Rodriguez and Mr. A. That was very interesting. I agree with Commissioner Payne. It would be interesting to hear from you more often. I actually have a question. At the beginning of your presentation, Mr. Rodriguez, you said something about talking to and, and working with the medical facility at Holloman Air Force Base with the changing, it's something about a transition, a change in them, in what's going on medically. Is there, are there any more details you can share?
Ma'am, this is a major concern. It should be a major concern to communities, because as you well know, all our communities are underserved medically. So one of the things that's going to be happening is that they want to move all medical services under one large Department of Defense Department, the Defense Health Agency. All of the service chiefs are opposed to this, because they really don't know how that's going to impact services. Utilizing, for example, just El Paso, you know, potentially at William Beaumont, they were taking a look at the loss at one point of about 300 folks out of that hospital and shifting those services into the community. So we continue to work with them. Congress is slowing them down in this effort, but it's something that we all need to be vigilant in, because if they do move forward, then obviously, that's going to impact as they push a lot of those services out into the community. For example, pediatrics is, is one that just comes to mind. You know, you can't take a pediatric physician into combat. There, you know, you don't have a need for them. So some of those things is what they're looking at is just eliminating some of those service lines and pushing those into the community. But we would be happy to get you some additional information, because I think this is something that that individuals and all three installations need to be very concerned about.
Yes, as it becomes available, that would be fine. The other thing I was curious about, because Holloman Air Force Base is really touting the recent release of the EIS, the recent environmental impact statement. And we've read in our newspaper that, that the F-16s are no longer going to be flying over the Gila. Has that affected our relationship with Holloman at all?
Ma'am, that, I will be honest with you, that's something I can't speak to very well, so I would have to defer that to Mr. Bramson, you know, who, who has, yeah, has regular interaction with, with that, with the leadership there.
I could certainly ask. Thank you again for the presentation. That was very interesting.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mayor Boss, if I may, just respond to Commissioner Sykes' request and also to offer to you, one, we really want to do these on a quarterly basis. We've made that commitment to you in writing, as we have the other communities. It's been difficult getting on your agenda, but we are prepared every quarter to give you an update on what's happened since the last briefing.
That'd be great.
And also, sir, periodically, in fact, over the last several weeks, we've had numerous briefings with, as an example, the second-in-command at, at the Army's Futures, General McKean. And we send notifications via email for an invitation for your, your committee to participate on those calls. So I send them to Mr. Brian Caesar's office, and if he will provide us with everyone's email, we'd be happy to make sure that every one of you gets notified for all of these presentations that are being made to us, which will help keep you up to date as we go through each quarter.
Thank you.
And City Manager Caesar, just, just one comment real quick. Next, next week, for example, we will be hosting a briefing by the Fort Bliss Garrison Commander on some of their missions, and we are just, the participants for that, the target participants are economic development folks. So we will make sure that you get a copy of that invitation, so that you can get yourself and some of your people and any member of the, of the council that would like to participate in that.
Gentlemen, thank, thank.
To the.
Who had a question? Yes.
I did.
Commissioner McDonald.
I wanted to just ask about the, the station capabilities and the rating with the AARP. And I just wanted to ask, where does Almagordo stand right now? And what would the update bring Almagordo to? And the second point is working with the area school districts to focus on the STEM, the AI autonomy, and the data mining.
Commissioner, that's a, that's a good question, and thank you for that question. I believe that the region as a whole is about two points shy of being the baseline for the, for the, for the standard. In talking with Mr. Bramson and, and his interaction with, with folks within Almagordo, and when we reviewed the criteria, we noticed that, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the graduation rate that was being reflected in that criteria was lower than, than, than what it actually was within the city. So we are working with AARP to try and get those updates to them, so that they can, you know, go ahead and improve those, those scores. Pretty much everybody is, is shy of maybe one or two points. Las Cruces, El Paso, and Almagordo are just right, right, right there. So it's, it's something to just provide some information and it'll get us above the baseline. We learned about this when the Air Force was trying to make a decision as to where they were going to station the Space Command Headquarters, and that was a criteria that they were using, is AARP's evaluation of communities. And in reference to the, to the STEM question that you provided, one of the things that we want to start working with the schools is, is, again, interacting with them to be able to provide them those informations, that information that would encourage them. In the most recent brief that we had from Army Test and Evaluation Command, the commanding general, you know, encouraged us to talk to teachers and to talk to counselors, so that they could guide kids, young people into those, into those arenas, and not, he wasn't utilizing that as a recruiting tool. He was talking about this from government, from the government service standpoint, and, and in particular, at White Sands, the fact that they have an aging civilian population, employment, employee population, that, that they need to get some folks in the pipeline, so that when these men and women decide to retire, that we've got some of our young people that are taking those jobs within the region and not leaving us.
If I may add to that, Gus, as well, to your question, ma'am, it's not just only critical that the school districts in the post-secondary, excuse me, the school districts focus on the AI and STEM and autonomy and data mining, but at post-secondary education as well, that there is an overlap partnership between, as an example, New Mexico State working with the school districts as well, so that these students who have a passion for this and skill sets are encouraged to pursue this further during their post-secondary education, so that they're able to then find these excellent and very highly-paid positions while working within defense.
And ma'am, and these jobs are jobs that are located within our region. So, so the effort that we want to make is to try and provide these opportunities to the young people within our region, so that they won't leave, you know, and find good employment with great, with good benefits.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Anyone else have any questions? If not, gentlemen, thank you very much for a great presentation. Thank you for the support you give our military. We really appreciate that, and our, and our defense contractors, and we look forward to having maybe, maybe more often. more often uh, presentations from you down the road. Uh, kind of keep the mission informed. We would appreciate that, to have the opportunity to do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Very good presentation and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
We will move on to public comment. Uh, do we have a Mr. Charles Lee? I understand we have public comment from Mr. Charles Lee. Is he with us this evening?
No, sir, he never, he never.
Okay, then we will move on. What does City Manager report? This, uh, Brian Caesar, our City Manager, do you have a report for us this evening, Brian?
Uh, actually tonight, I'm gonna turn over my time to Chief Denton. He has a, a short presentation to give.
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Air Protem Commissioner, City Manager. Thank you for your time. I have a few folks in my office. I'm gonna put my mask on here in just a second. I'm gonna turn my camera. What I'm doing is presenting the Officer of the Year for the Al Magordo Police Department for year 2020. So um, we'll uh, we'll begin. Um, I'll sit here and read this and then I'll get up. I'm just gonna do a brief synopsis. Our first nominee will be uh, Officer Daniel Navarres. Uh, Officer Navarres was nominated by his Sergeant Monroe. Uh, he displays a commendable attitude. Brings positive attitude to work daily where he encourages others to not only have the same positive attitude, but remain positive. When Officer Navarres comes in and contact with citizen who is displaying signs of mental illness, especially when the citizen is displaying signs of psychosis, Officer Navarres demonstrates his compassion and understanding of the individual's viewpoint and feelings. He speaks with a calm and understanding voice and will guide or direct them to help them find the correct service provider for that individual's needs. Officer Navarres is one of the department's more experienced senior officers. He's often called by fellow officers requesting his advice. He will sit down with the officer and explain step by step the best practices for solving a problem. Officer Navarres' investigations are thorough and complete, is always busy and proactive in all areas of his work. Officer Navarres demonstrates a strong work ethic. His record of accomplishments, proactive policing and frequent patrolling of our neighborhoods helped to make Al Magordo and Otero County a safer and better place to live. Congratulations, Officer Navarres.
Congratulations, Officer.
Thank you.
Next we have Officer Cheyenne Bunker. She was hired with Al Magordo Police Department, started her career as a police officer. Uh, let me draw it back. She was nominated by Sergeant uh, Garrett. She always demonstrates a high level of competency and the technical still, skills and knowledge of her position. During the calendar year of 2020, she had nineteen felony arrests, fifteen arrest warrants, twenty search warrants and twenty-one criminal complaints. Her investigative skills and diligence to make solid cases is among the, amongst the best in the department. Any cases Officer Bunker receives, she works the investigation to the fullest, no matter if it is a misdemeanor or felony. If a major scene or incident occurs, she is always willing to take the case or help whichever officer or detective the case is assigned to without hesitation. Officer Bunker did make a hundred and eleven arrests in 2020. While Officer Bunker solved a variety of cases in 2020, she was dispatched to a physical fight and learned two male subjects and a female were in a physical fight. During the fight, a male brandished a firearm threatening the victim. The suspect advised Officer Bunker he never had a gun and he never threatened anyone. She was able to obtain a search warrant for the property and locate a firearm. She interviewed numerous witnesses and was able to arrest a suspect for aggravated assault with a deadly weapon. Numerous children were present during the altercation and investigation. And by her obtaining the search warrant, she was also able to uh, charge a parent with a childhood abuse based on the condition of her residence. Officer Bunker was dispatched to an address for a criminal sexual penetration of a sixteen-year-old female who is missing part of her brain and only functions as a six-year-old. She uh, was granted a search warrant through investigation. She was able to search through records on Facebook. She spent countless hours going over a hundred and fifty thousand pages of messages. She was able to find enough evidence to charge the male subject with criminal penetration of a minor. These are only a couple among many cases Officer Bunker worked tirelessly to serve and protect the citizens of Al Magordo. Officer Bunker should be recognized for her work ethic, excellent teamwork and her expanding job knowledge that she displayed over the duration of the calendar year of 2020. Congratulations, Officer Bunker.
Congratulations. And they, are they still there? Th- thank you both for your service to our community. We really truly appreciate you and your exemplary service. Thank you.
And our last one, but not least, is Officer Punte. His supervisor Sergeant Escaro has nominated him for Officer of the Year. Since Officer Punte has been employed by the Al Magordo Police Department, he's displayed exemplary performance and was a certified K-9 officer since March of 2017. Officer Punte has shown himself to be a well-rounded officer during his duties as K-9 officer. He's made countless arrests for drug-related crimes and recovered numerous items of drugs and paraphernalia, to include methamphetamine, heroin and marijuana. In March of 2020, Officer Punte responded to the West Alley of, of a address on Vermont in reference to a suspicious vehicle parked. During the search, numerous items of drug paraphernalia were observed, including a billy club type stick in men's clothing. On the following day, Officer Punte, after reviewing an intro department email on a Rocky Mountain Intelligence Network that occurred in the past few nights, the alert was accompanied with a photograph of the male subject holding the clothes. Um, we don't have the outcome on that, but that just goes to show that he uh, is putting his investigations together and tying these things together. In July, he responded to a residence and referenced to a physical domestic. He learned a male subject threatened, he would shoot anyone that arrives at the residence. He arrived unseen and he approached a front door, noticed a male subject standing in the threshold of doorway and was the upper, able to apprehend the subject. Um, and the subject did have a weapon in his waistband. Uh, after investigation, he battered, had battered his living girlfriend. Um, as a result of the investigation, he was charged with felony child abuse. It was uh, aggravated assault against household member, felony false imprisonment, battery against a household member and negligent use of a firearm. Uh, he responded to a motel in reference to a domestic disturbance in which a female had a knife to the throat of another female. After speaking with a female on the phone for some time, he was able to convince her to open the door. Uh, once he, once she opened the door, the uh, female was holding a knife. The female companion did not suffer any injuries, but was just struck with the incident. The Officer Punte was able to charge a female suspect with first degree felony kidnapping and third degree felony assault with intent to commit a felony. He also conducted a traffic stop where a male driver exited a vehicle and began reaching in the driver's seat. He seized the vehicle for application of a search warrant. The male driver requested uh, K-9 Punte retrieve his keys off the keyring to the ignition. When doing so, he observed a handgun on the driver's side door console. Immediately arrested the driver due to knowledge the driver is a convicted felon. Officer Punte applied for a search warrant, was granted one, which yielded illegal narcotics, approximately four grams of methamphetamine, some drug paraphernalia. As a result of the investigation, the male was subsequently arrested and charged with felony possession of firearm, possession of methamphetamines and possession of drug paraphernalia. Officer Punte has countless arrests of felony possession, legal narcotics related crimes, to include drug paraphernalia at times during public contacts and being proactive on patrol. He has a hundred and thirty-eight physical arrests and has summons to appear various thirty-two uh, folks to court, thirty-two times, for a total of a hundred and seventy arrests. He had three hundred and thirty-five traffic stops and issued a hundred and fifty-six citations. Also has thirty felony arrests, three felony warrants. He obtained nine search warrants and has six DWI arrests. Officer Punte displays teamwork and is willing to help fellow officers when needed and goes out of his way to help the department. I'd like to congratulate Officer Punte for his nomination of Officer of the Year.
I think we're proud of you.
Can they hear me? Can they hear me? No. Uh, I want you each to know that your, your hard work does not go unnoticed. Each of you um, displays this, your supervisors recognize it. I recognize it. I congratulate you just being nominated is, is an honor itself. But there can only be one one. So, Officer Bunker, I'd like to congratulate you for being Officer of the Year.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, every, all three of you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Appreciate your, all your time.
And thank you to all our officers. We really appreciate you.
Absolutely. We'll move on, uh, to remarks and inquiries by the City Commission. Uh, any commissioners have any remarks or any questions they would like to ask?
I think we got one.
Who, who was that? Oh, Mr. McDonald?
Uh, yes, I do. I have a, a, a comment. Um, well, I want, it's really a compliment. Uh, back uh, in um, I think July of last year and even before, I think the um, recommendations for the demolition of Sacramento Elementary School uh, was actually put in place. Uh, and then of course, it started happening uh, on uh, November uh, of uh, last year. And the job is almost completed, but I would like to um, thank um, Mr. Jared Perry and the um, Al Magordo Public Schools for the job that they did. It wasn't one of those jobs where uh, when they started the work, um, they left a lot of uh, debris uh, and uh, a lot of things damaged. Uh, it was done and it was done very nicely. I think right now, there's currently like about four piles of metal, uh, bricks and miscellaneous stuff out there. I, I can't identify it, but I would like to thank them for doing such a nice job. Uh, you know, I said, sometimes things happen and you don't get the best results, but I would like to say for uh, this particular project uh, on uh, Alaska, three hundred Alaska Avenue, uh, it's almost done. We still have uh, trees. We still have some of the equipment. And I believe that they're uh, moving for a new look. And uh, I wanted to let um, the city know that I really appreciate that since it's part of the district that I'm in. Uh, I also want to say um, thank you to the Planning and um, Zoning Committee and also for the Waste Management Committee. Uh, I actually uh, attended a meeting and uh, saw a little bit about what they do and I wanted to understand how that works. Uh, and I got a lot, lot of information. Uh, they're gonna have to tell it to me again because there's no way you can hold all of that in your head. So um, right now, I said I'm gonna write notes and, and make sure that I uh, continue to at least uh, hear some of the information uh, to stay updated. Uh, I do have a request and this is based on the fact that I've been looking at the uh, comprehensive plan uh, for the city of Al Magordo. And a lot of things have not changed, but I was wondering if uh, going forward, we could have like the list of uh, projects that are uh, actually done in the city. If we could have the return on investment, if that is possible for each of the products, I mean, projects that we have done. And the other item that I wanted to ask uh, as part of just information that we normally get, is um, based on what we have done uh, in the um, in the city, uh, across, you know, the uh, different uh, districts. If we could see how the money is distributed in each of the districts to see uh, how much is actually being placed in uh, each area. And uh, hopefully with that comprehensive plan, we can actually see a little bit more about how the uh, the city is making the, the money work for uh, the city of Al Magordo. So those are some of the things that I wanted to um, uh, to mention. And uh, I've, I will follow up with uh, Brian on, on some of those, but uh, because we have that comprehensive plan and some of the things that are happening in the city, uh, I was just wanting to ask if we could include uh, those items at a future date. Thank you.
Mister Mayor, I got one.
Who was that? I didn't see who it was. I'm sorry. Oh, God.
Yeah, um, yeah, I just was wondering, and this is probably more for, for Brian, but do we have a list of, you know, in, for the last year of this shutdown of, of how many local businesses have uh, shut permanently? Um, or out, actually even, I don't know if we'll have that, but if we would have, how many local businesses are, are permanently going to be closed due to this uh, shutdown for the last almost year?
Um, no, I don't have a list like that right now. I can reach out to the Chamber and see if they have information.
Okay.
Could potentially show up in the business licenses.
It might, it might, yeah. Um, I just, you know, there's a lot of businesses that aren't part of the Chamber. I'm just kind of wondering how many we've lost in the last year.
I, I don't think we've received all the renewals yet for the, for the business licensing for this year.
I, I know one you haven't received yet. This is sitting on the console in that truck.
Okay, well, we're gonna charge you double then.
All right, I'll have to pay the extra ten dollars. But yeah, no, I was just kind of wondering if, if we kind of could get a, a compile a list of, of how many we've lost in the last year and uh, just kind of, so we kind of know.
So, um, Commissioner Redden, to answer your question, it's hard to say if they closed due to COVID. However, near 2020, I would probably say there's been maybe twenty-five, thirty businesses that closed, but we don't know if it's due to COVID.
Okay.
But I can certainly run a report for you that will tell us how many businesses closed.
That will, the basically business registrations that we've lost? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, that's a lot. How many, how many business registrations do we typically send out?
So we have renewals, we have just over seventeen hundred.
Okay.
But have been a lot of businesses that have been applying. For instance, um, I have uh, about twelve that I'm working on that are brand new. And that's just in the uh, late December and January.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we will move on to the consent agenda. Uh, does any staff member or commissioner like, want to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Payne to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
This is uh, you with it?
Jason.
I have a second from Commissioner Baldwin. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Rarden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Moss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Move on to public, public hearing. Item eight, consider and act upon a transfer of ownership of this liquor license to license number zero one one nine zero two eight three and zero nine one oh, located at one hundred North White Sands Boulevard, eight twenty-two North Scenic Drive and twenty-two oh one North White Sands Boulevard to BW and Gas Convenience Retail. And uh, I, I believe we have a, do we have Mr. Green here today to make, make comments on, on this hearing?
He is, sir. He is the regional manager of All Supps because Mr. um, Clark could not be present. So he is, in case you have any questions of him. I mean, this is just a transfer of ownership. Um, and All Supps has the existing licenses.
Does any question, have any questions of Mr. Green?
Mister Mayor?
Uh, who, Commissioner Redd?
Mister Redden. Uh, I'll just Uh, I'll just make a motion to, uh, approve case to, uh, V dash 2020 dash 002, 0002, sorry. All right, wrong, wrong. Sorry, I'm reading the wrong one. Uh, just item number eight. Trying to find it on my computer here.
I have a motion from Commissioner Reardon to approve item eight, which is considered an act upon a transfer of ownership. It's been for liquor license. Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Payne. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, nay? Motion passes seven zero. When we, uh, when we move on to new business, um, item 10, consider an act upon ordinance 1626 for first publication authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan and subsidy agreement for the amount of $2,151,300 between the city of El Magordo and the New Mexico Finance Authority. We have Evelyn, our finance director here, if there are any questions on that item. This is, um, uh, this is related to the, I know the need to lighten, uh, renovation, uh, where we're gonna do some work on the front of the dam, on the facing of the dam that was desperately needed, that wasn't the original did. And, uh, uh, I think some other things.
Correct.
Have any questions? Evelyn?
That's correct. Um, this is the first publication, the ordinance for, um, the drinking state drinking water loan, uh, that you all have seen in front of you a couple of times at this point. Uh, they are ready to close on the loan, so we're bringing the first publication, then we'll bring the second. And the timeframe right now looks for closing on the loan about mid-April.
We're losing you, Evelyn, we're losing you.
I'm sorry. I'm good.
Okay. Any, any questions or comments? Evelyn? If not, do I hear a motion?
So we'll move.
We, I have a motion from Commissioner Baldwin to approve item 10, which is to consider an act upon ordinance 1626. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Commissioner Reardon. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Jason Baldwin?
Aye.
Nadia Sykes?
Aye.
Josh Rarden?
Aye.
Sharon McDonald?
Aye.
Dusty Wright?
Aye.
Susan Payne?
Aye.
Richard Moss?
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. That's, it is fantastic that we got that, uh, loan for that. That's something that we really needed to do and we didn't have the finances to do it. And it's gonna, in the long run, many years down the road, we're gonna be very thankful we did that. Uh, we'll move on to item 11, appointments to board committees. We, I'm gonna go through all of the committees and, uh, that we have, where there's, and boards where we have application openings. Uh, the airport zone board, we have, it had, it has one city vacancy and there's no applications received on that. Al Magordo Public Library Board, we have one city vacancy and we have no applications received. Cemetery Board has two city or county vacancies and we had three individuals that had applied for that and we had, uh, Caleb Moore, uh, Kent House and Mark Brown. And I selected Caleb Moore and Kent House to be appointed to their first term. Unless, if there's no objections, those two individuals will be appointed. Maybe they're so appointed, Caleb, uh, Moore and Kent House, apply to the cemetery. Housing Authority Advisory Board, there are two vacancies, no applications received. Senior Volunteer Programs Advisory Council, there is one vacancy, um, and there's no applications received. I'd like to point out that if anyone is interested in serving on a board or committee, they can apply to the city clerk's office and I think we can still do this online also, right? You can fill out an application online.
Yes.
And, and apply for one of those that you might be interested in. If there's no further business for the good of the city, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Payne to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, a second from Commissioner Reardon?
Yes.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven zero. Good evening, everyone. We are adjourned.
Evening to you.
Night. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.